I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together this evening to discuss the matters of our city. Pray that you watch over our residents and all those people around in North Dakota as seasons have changed, that they can travel safely to all of their destinations. We just pray you watch over all of our activities this evening.
Hey, reading approval of minutes from the November eighteenth meeting?
Motion to approve this is the meeting.
Motion by Wolf. Second. And second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Approval of the agenda. Any additions, changes, or corrections to the agenda?
Motion to accept the agenda as scheduled.
Motion by Keller?
Second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion. All in favor of approving this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So under five, we don't have anybody with for consultation and attorney or engineer, however, we do have a note from Jared Monday. Did everybody get that?
No.
Okay, well, if you didn't get the actual email, it is under the notes, the meeting notes. Jared just kind of outlined a timeline that if we did want to put in for the grant, or not grant. That we need to move in to the 1216 meeting. He also is a bit skeptical that what we're asking for, since this is an old highway, he doesn't think we're probably going to be getting any money for that. So I don't know if there's anything else we, you know, wanted to look at. We talked about installing lighting by TSC and by Bridge Road to the golf course. So that'd still be an option, but if we wanted to move forward, these are the kind of the step one, document the public input process, notice in the paper, discussion on 1216 meeting, then have application completed by 1231, and then we need to have the signature from DOT, the district engineer, and Jared will handle that portion of it. So I think it's still worth an ask. We can't get it unless we ask for it. So if we want to extend that lighting on the paths, I think that'd be great. But those are kind of dollars that we don't set aside ourselves in our own budget that are, you know, it's kind of wish list type thing, so if we can't do it ourselves, we might as well ask for it. And if we don't get it, we don't get it, but at least we asked for it. So Monty, do you need us to make, do you have any action on this now, or?
No, basically just give me the direction to go ahead and publish that it will be discussed at the December sixteenth meeting, although you will have some expenses for engineering, so maybe, maybe you do want a motion to proceed.
Okay, that's the direction that the board wants to go. Any idea what kind of expenses would be?
Well, it said it'd be the engineering would be as much as twenty hours to do the maps and the plans and some cost estimates, so it'd be several thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's one of those deals where it's not free, obviously, to do it, so if we think we have a chance, maybe we go that direction. But it's up to you guys. It's a case of, you know, no, I guess one thing that's been brought from the past is over by, I guess, over by, I guess, I guess, Ascenix, about putting a putting a, like a walking underpass to meet the highway, but it's going to cost a lot more than that. Yeah, it'd be, it'd be a lot of money to do it, and I think engineering will cost us a lot of money to have it engineered.
If you, if you get the grant, it's, I mean, right now, all they do is come up with some estimated costs and stuff. You get the grant, that's ninety percent, so it might be worthwhile then to look at that a little more, if we only have to pay ten percent to put it in.
Yeah, absolutely, that'd be, that'd be a great project, and that's something we'd never have. Lighting's different with a project like that, you're talking a lot.
Yeah.
I had several hundred thousand dollars of that. I have, half a million, probably, but, you know, good point, that's, that'd be.
I'd be more inclined to go along with Casey. We're going to go after some relatively free money here. That would be something that would be a stretch for us to try to fund, you know, within the city. Lighting, I think, would be something a little bit more manageable, that even if we were to take that on on our own. And clearly, there's, I don't know, I haven't monitored it, but I'm guessing there's a fair amount of traffic that went across right there. For the people that walk the path, taking a jump over for, for real or something, you know, there's.
Well, those kids going to school.
Yes.
That's the biggest one. Okay. We need a motion that for want to proceed that direction, that might just, let's sort of, to notice, notify the paper that will be presented on our next agenda. I move to have more, more engineering putting the application for us with a cap of twenty hours of work. Okay, and then motion by Casey.
For the underpass?
For the whole project, for the lighting and the.
Okay. Let's second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion?
I don't know that they're going to be able to do the lighting and the underground for twenty hours.
I don't either. He did say in here.
I mean, I would pick one project or the other if you wanted, and even the underpass is going to be more than twenty hours.
Yeah.
I'm going to guess.
Well, but I don't think you'd have to have it fully engineered.
You'd have to have it fully engineered, but I don't think they'll do both projects, because that's too separate.
Just a thought of it, you know, maybe, so we don't want to.
Typically, at this point here, you're probably looking at a ten percent design type thing, so maybe able to manage that.
Okay, well.
They'll certainly let us know otherwise.
Right, yeah, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, any words, first?
Stern.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion carried. Six A, library report. By committee, or just CNN? Come on up.
Hi, good evening, guys. You're wondering why I'm here. The North Dakota State Library changed their standards for public libraries here in the last year, and one of the requirements that they are listing is that we do a face-to-face with all of our commissioners, where previously, I've been sending out monthly reports in a county of a board meeting, and I've been sending them out to our respective commissioner representative. But this is my annual report, and this is going to be old information, because we had to do last year's report, so this is going to be for two thousand and eighteen. And then when I file my annual report for two thousand and nineteen, which happens towards the end of January, I'll be back in here again February or March to review that with you. I believe all of you may have already seen the report. Those are our respective board members and our personnel. If you look at the list of our personnel, it looks like there's quite a few people, but time-wise, it's the equivalent of two F2Es, myself and all the rest who have just gone through, into an employee. And with me this evening is Allison Peterson, she is our board chair at this time. These are the different services that we provide at your local library. Pretty much the same as every other library. We are very fortunate, we do have ten computers in our computer lab, which is quite a bit for a library our size. But as I shared with Casey here a couple of months ago, all ten computers are not used all the time, but we were fortunate that when they had the real plant under construction, they had some individuals that needed to do the OSHA training. They approached us and asked, how many computers do you have? And they brought people in for a couple of days, and we were able to let them use our computer lab for the training, so it's very nice that we have that. We have the Overdrive and the RV Digital Apps. Those are provided through our state library. College Exam Proctoring, Genealogy, Microfilm, the city and local military history. We have lots of blinders. Wayloni Myhop has been compiling information for several years, and we do house that over at the library. Right now, it is behind closed doors. We did just today receive some more donations for us to have a new cabinet constructed, and that's going to have glass doors, so that people actually know this is our local history here, and are free to take a look at it. More of the different services that we have, the access channel for the community, we do the updates over at the library, we house the equipment there. And I am a notary. We have a quiet area, of course, we have the kids' room, the display case, of course, we all know about storytime and summer reading, you know, it's one of our big things. We are starting to hold more events for adults and teens. There again, those are requirements by the state we need to make. These are the different items that we have on hand. Are very good with our books, kids' kits, MMRL items, periodicals, state park pass. That's one of our great little secrets. We do have four passes available that are provided to us from the state parks. You can check them out for one week, and there is no cost to use. So they are becoming more and more of a demand, especially in the summertime, but they are checked out throughout the year. And it works for all state parks in North Dakota, does not work for the national parks. And if they get lost or not returned, the state is not going to be giving us any more of those passes. Here again with our downloadable information, if you want to flip back just a little bit. Granted, we have eleven thousand books and audiobooks, but notice the downloadable audio and ebooks. This is because of the two apps that we have that's provided by the state, so, I mean, there's so much out there. Okay?
See, the only negative thing with that is I just use those, I don't walk from the library anymore.
I've noticed that.
Yeah, I use those a lot more now.
Something that we have, starting to purchase now, they're fairly new, they're called Playaways, and it's just a little box, and it has a book on it, and you use earbuds. You can take it for a walk, you can take it when you travel, so stop by for them.
All right.
They are a little bit pricier, so we're just kind of treading water with them a little bit.
What's that called?
Playaway.
Playaway.
Yes. And then, again, this is what we have as far as fiction, nonfiction, inspirational, literature, all of that also. Okay? If you'd like, okay, our miscellaneous stats. We actually had over twenty thousand items checked out from our library last year, and then, of course, check-ins. The ILL requests and the request for ILL is interlibrary loan with our consortium, with the CDLN Consortium. We can request items from the other libraries, from the state, and then they go out throughout the country to look for items. And our local library, we requested thirty-one hundred and thirty-eight items, but I like the figure, it says that we were actually able to fill other libraries' requests at fifty-two hundred, so. Computer usage, number of visitors, just short of eleven thousand visitors last year. We do have to keep track on a daily basis as far as how many people are using our facility and how many people are using our computers. That's part of our annual reporting to the state. We had eighty-seven events last year, just under two thousand people attended. Some went quite well, some eh, okay. With our summer reading program last year, we had the theater, the theater group come in, and we were expecting, you know, seventy-five hundred people, well, we had twenty-five people. Later on that year, we had a movie outside, and we thought, okay, twenty-five people. We're guessing there was at least a hundred and fifty people, they just all kept coming, and so we were not prepared for that, so, but it was nice. It's something that I shared with Chamber, at least we know what the community would like to see. Here again with our collaboration, MMRL, McLean, Marston Regional Library, it's a public libraries, McLean and Marston Counties. The Central Dakota Library Network Consortium, it consists of twenty public and school libraries. And then, of course, the state library, we have our friends at the library, Hazen Chamber we work with, volunteers, and our Hazen Art Association. Where did the money come from? Of course, property taxes from the state, some reimbursement from the city. I received five thousand dollars in grants last year. We had over six thousand dollars in donations and fundraisers. MMRL gave us a two thousand dollar donation to use as we received that. Miscellaneous fines, fees, copies, et cetera. MMRL also pays a portion of my salary, that's what that twenty-three thousand dollars is. We pay X number of dollars for so many hours. Where did the money go, of course, is where it needs to go? Books, periodicals, audio, advertising, office expense, we, the general information there. The eleven hundred and twenty-six for the blinds and bookcases. The blinds were paid for by the friends of the library with their fundraising, and Thrive It provided us with a little bit of grant money for purchasing a bookcase to house the new North Dakota items that we had received for our grant last year. Maintenance and repair was a little bit higher last year, but if you'll notice, there was that, like, fixture replacement in two thousand and fifteen, we were finally invoiced in the fall of two thousand and eighteen, and that was just under three thousand dollars, so that's what the majority of that cost was. Utilities, training, programming, et cetera. Yeah, and they said we received a couple of grant awards last year, and then the donation from Thrive It. We took part in the Taste of Hazen, and we were chosen People's Choice for our best appetizers. That was one of our board members, dressed as Thing One, and we served anything pertaining to Dr. Seuss's books. And this one is, it's kind of scary when you look at it, but it's not all that bad. But we do have the ramp, the handicap ramp. It is starting to show some wear, it has shifted a little bit. If I can get a grant money, I'd like to replace that. But before we do that, we do have that issue of the foundation leak on the south side of the building. We're not sure, or I'm not sure, I don't have the expertise on that, but I have been visiting with Casey, and we'll see if we can come up with something to determine what is causing that. The exterior signage could use some repainting. The Girl Scouts did paint the big sign, but we do have a couple hanging on the building that could really, it's a little bit more updating. I'm hoping to have that taken care of in two thousand and twenty. Ceiling tiles, they're stained, they may have been stained for twenty years, I don't know, but it is something that is, something that should be looked at. Computer lab, of course, needs repainting. There's a little slant to the floor behind the circulation desk. We've had a lot of people remark about the stairs going downstairs to the meeting rooms being too narrow. It would be nice if we could have a lift to accommodate those individuals. We've explored the option of putting in an elevator, but for fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars, we don't have a budget for that. Maybe there are some grant funds out there that I can research on that, too. The room downstairs where we keep most of our supplies and the restroom in the lower level do not have ceiling tiles on them at this point. We really can't put anything in there again until we know what's causing the issue with the foundation. Windows, we're awfully close to the railroad. We can go ahead and replace the windows, we don't need to replace the windows, the building shuts. It is what it is, and we can get some of the windows open. And the landscaping, it had been several years since anything was done. I did have somebody come in from two thousand and nineteen to do a little bit of the work, a little bit of trimming and removing some of the older ones. I have requested in my budget for two thousand and twenty a little bit of funds to replace some of that also. I believe there would be a grant on that, too. Any questions, remote?
Somebody's, the usage, yeah, over there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, yeah, we're very fortunate.
Any questions for CNN? I was just going to say, I guess, you know, I guess, like, last week goes out there, I guess, whether it gets to the board meeting, I mean, they're, they're organizing, and all the bases are all, are all, are all, are all covered, and, I mean, and they do a great job for us. They do, I'm like, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you.
Yeah, yeah. Sure, great, thanks.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Six B, welcome permit, Hazen Preschool. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Wolf to approve. Second by Keller. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You? All right, now to A, county tax deed property.
There was a property taken back by the county for unpaid taxes, it is a townhouse over on Spatchan Drive. Been trying to get ahold of the county to see if we can actually inspect that property before we make a decision on accepting it. My understanding is that it is currently occupied at this point, so that may be another issue we would have to address if we do take ownership. So I guess.
Is it occupied by the individuals that?
No, no, it's actually a rental property. So I guess, at this point, until we get some more input from the county, this is just more, just more information right now. They might have an answer within thirty days of their letter on the twentieth, so they will put it back on the agenda for the sixteenth, and hopefully have some more information, and if nothing else, an inspection of the inside.
Don't these, I guess, don't these, like, normally, you guess, I'd like to look for, I guess, like, public sale first?
It was a public sale, and there was more business.
So then, even if we were to, I guess, get this property, so would we, I guess, I guess, I'd like to save it for, I guess, like, a city, city, I guess, employee, or would we turn around and, I guess, like, resell it, or?
I guess that would be up to you guys. I'd be curious how we'd be any more successful selling it than our licensed real estate agent, or. Well, and would we, the city, in addition to the one dollar purchase price, we'd be obligated for any outstanding taxes to the county?
Just specials. It says here that
Oh, I'm sorry.
The county would, would remove the outstanding taxes against the property as to the specials, it would be up to us if we don't take that one.
The specials are nine hundred and twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Well, I guess if it didn't come back to us, and we wanted to do it for our old workers, we could, but, you know, if it's
Sixty-eight, three fifty.
Realtor's probably going to try to sell it close to that, like, couldn't sell it for twenty-five thousand, and, you know, still make people
Ten hundred, couple more.
Absolutely.
For sale by owner?
Obviously, that would be up to you guys.
I don't know the rules on that, but I think, either way, we'd be in a good situation. So then, what? No. So then, yes, like, even if we were to not then, not then as purchases, would be the next, I guess?
Yeah, would stay with the county.
Okay.
Yeah, would stay with the county, and they would probably try to advertise a new install, they can, yeah.
I would encourage our, our having somebody go in there and inspect it before we, oh, there's people living, seeing people live in some pretty destitute situations, so.
And that brings up a good point, I saw the city of business just put minimum standards on rental properties into their ordinances last week, I believe. They just did that. They have minimum standards on housing, but not rental housing, so it's, maybe something we want to look at. Then you'll give us more info, then, Monty?
Yes, I will.
All right, thank you. Eight B, option to purchase property. Mr. Barland?
Based on the taxes and specials, Planner Sager came up with a selling price of seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Mr. Barland accepts that and has paid ten percent down if the board accepts his offer or purchase option. He would assume then the two hundred and one dollars in unpaid special assessments for that property then as well. This is the one over on Thirteenth Avenue, right across from the ECC gate here.
You found some work? Casey? So then, I guess, I thought we had, I guess, I talked about advertising this, advertising it, I guess.
All of the lots we have wasn't.
It was advertised, okay, okay.
The city currently has six lots.
Okay.
Hopefully five.
Okay, we'll accept this first agreement, we need motion?
Sold.
Motion by Wolf. Second, second by Stern. Discussion. Welcome. Wolf?
Aye.
Stern. Keller?
Aye.
Moven hour.
Aye, motion carried. All right. Eight C. Multi-hazard mitigation plan agreement, Carmen, come on up. Welcome, how are you?
Good. Well, first, to warm everybody up, I got money for the city. I'm the Secretary of Trade for the Hazen Warfare District, we're paying our minutes. And we do appreciate the fact, you guys.
Thank you.
Okay. This multi-hazard mitigation plan, every five years, we're supposed to update it, which gives us all a chance in the community, including all the cities, to review our hazards, any kind of mitigation Hazen can do, you can think of, we're looking for projects to put in here. And, you know, once we put these mitigation projects, then, you know, they have grants. It's kind of part of the plan is to use their grants to get these done. What I did is I took out from this plan, what, what it is, is kind of a summary of all of our hazards in the county, and also the, I think it's the fourth page, Hazen has their, has their hazards that you guys, our mitigation projects that you guys wanted to do. And it just shows you five years ago what you guys were looking at doing. One of the projects was enhancing the abandoned rail lying west of town to divert slow water drainage from the northwest. So what we do is we review these, see, have you got them done, or are they not even valid? And then, and then we put on new projects. What I'm asking you to sign today is an agreement that you would have a representation from the city to at least two of our meetings. This is like a two-year project. We're not due till May of twenty twenty-one. And what I'm doing here is, if I can get you guys to agree to that, and the thing is, you know, Oliver County, I'm working with them and we're finishing up and I know their city council had a hard time meeting some meetings. So what I do is I come to city meetings and then we went through their hazards with the council and stuff. So I got their requirements, but I know, you know, you have Shannon, Shannon. And it's just a, an agreement to be part of this update. Which I think is really important, that everybody be a partner. Do you guys have any questions on this? And you also realize that this is what qualifies us if there's a disaster for federal funding. If we don't have this in place, then we are, you know, we don't get federal funding.
Can I ask you about one of our action items?
Yes.
Take it forward. The continued channel clear and debris removal programs for Ninth River and Antelope Creek. Are those, are those done by the West County Water Board? Are those, are, how, how have those been done and who's responsible and who pays and how do?
Okay, this, okay, for like this, the city, it's your project, so the city's responsible. But I believe you guys worked with the water board to get that cleared. And I don't know if it got done or, I know Hula also had worked with this water board to do that, too.
You did some, a couple of years.
Some of it, yeah.
Didn't Charlie do some work, didn't he? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, it'd be the city and then whoever you guys would work it, because these are your projects for the city of Hazen. And that's where we'd have to talk to.
It's not Greg, it might be.
Mark, Mark Casey.
And then Casey Voight is the chairman.
Okay, she is.
The one of those two.
Okay. So explain to me again, Carmen, a little bit more about what this, to sign this. You, you want this?
I'm requesting you to make a motion and then that says that you will participate and then at least have a representation at two face-to-face. And then sign the document.
Okay.
Make a motion and we sign the document and continue to participate in this program.
Motion by Miller.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. Welcome. Miller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
O'Vanore. Aye. Motion carried.
Great, thank you very much.
Can I ask you another question?
Yes.
So, who's, who contacts you from the National Weather Service or, or Corbin here is talking about water and flooding in the springtime and, you know, as we're guesstimating on
Okay.
snowfall and how, how that all.
Okay, so what I'm doing all year is kind of watching, like now for the winter, we're gonna watch. Is it gonna freeze up? Is our, you know, are we gonna get some snow so it won't be a hard freeze? I always talk to Alan Schlag when it comes to how far down the frozen, yeah, how frozen it is, how much water we got, water content of the snow. I mean, he's been really good. And when, and then there, there is a concern, like, let's say, like in February, it depends. Then I'm gonna get ahold of you guys, like we have. And if we feel there's a concern, then I want a county-wide meeting to get everybody together and that's where I get Alan Schlag. I mean, if there's a real threat, then I get those guys to come. And Todd over here at the Corps, he's been really good to call me when there's, when he's releasing things. He maybe called me last spring. Anyway, he's really good about letting the community know what's going on and he'll be at those meetings, too, if there's a threat.
Okay, there's, there's already chatter, you know, about how saturated the ground is already, you know. Does that mean if it freezes hard, the frost is gonna go deeper in the ground and then it's harder for, you know, spring runoff and the melt thaw, you know, it can't get in the ground as easy. If that more runoff is gonna go to the, to the watersheds of the desert or knife of the Antelope Creek and, you know, that's, there's already, already conspiracy theories about the water this spring, so.
But, but you know, the years that I've gotten, so January at first would be ten years since I've been EAM and I've been watching and then learning and listening and talking to people. You know, we, yeah, we got fourteen inches of rain, but it's so damn. And I didn't hear anybody saying they got water in their basement. Those years, we had a lot of water and it was saturated. People were getting a lot of water in their basement coming through the ground. I didn't hear any of that. And it depends, if we get a hard frost and it melts, it has nowhere to go but the river. And then, and then the main concern, too, is the ice. And it seems like we have more ice when the river's really low and it freezes and then we get water coming and pushing it. But if we don't have any water and we get a lot of ice, like we did a couple of years ago, we had a couple miles of ice moving, so there's no threat. So a whole bunch of different scenarios.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that's what I do is if there's any kind of threat whatsoever, I reach out to you. But then I reach out to you guys anyway. If you feel there's a threat, let's get together, sit down, talk about it. And we're always watching and, and you can always call the weather service twenty-four seven. I know like Iowa, we used to call them, but you know, there's not even anybody living there now. I mean, there used to be a guy that was there on call all the time. Well, he isn't there all the time. But I still have a number, I believe he's in Bismarck, the guy that runs. So, yeah. So, yeah, we just keep our eyes and ears open and then we contact people and then we get along. And if you guys have concerns, you know, you can always call me. I mean, Gerald, just state, state is really good about lots of resources there. And they do wanna know our concerns.
Any other questions for Carmen? Alright, go ahead, sign it, set it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Alright, down to reports, water sewer.
Visited with our guys today and as far as riser replacements and repairs and stuff like that this fall before we, we got to the point now where we have snow and everything, they made tremendous progress. They got the, the key projects taken care of, including one over by the place. So he was pleased with what they had accomplished on that. And we talked about and Monty and I was going to discuss a schedule for performing the interviewing for the vacancy that will, that has taken place on the water team. So we'll be doing that hopefully before the holidays. And Dave, I don't know if you got an update, did we get that repaired then with, with the garbage truck, the? The component there?
Yep, that's all about the working goods.
Perfect.
Okay. Streets, Jason down here, Dave, anything else you want?
Oh, no.
Finance pressing. Please fire Forest Street.
Not this time, I have money.
And P C D.
Well, the only thing is on the grant, you know, maybe you wanna consider doing that piece of sidewalk off like Casey's running up to, running west to KSC because, you know, that part of the highway, that's not old. That's new, so in addition to the underground, you might be successful, more successful with that than unfortunately with some of the other stuff that I had proposed
Sure.
last time around, but.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to leave that sidewalk chunk out there.
Yeah, I think it would be great. I mean, every, I think everybody have to agree that'd be a great addition.
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay. So that takes down to eleven A, sale of city equipment.
Dave went through the offers. We were selling the tar kettle, the nineteen eighty-two IH truck and the one forty G cat motor grader. After going through the offers, the recommendation is to offer or accept the offer of Dale Schwabie in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for the tar kettle, the offer of Gene Hefner for one thousand, two hundred dollars for the IH truck, and the offer of Ole Sletton for twelve thousand, five hundred dollars for the cat blade. Since we need a motion if you want to accept them as presented.
Move to, move to approve the, the offers. Motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Miller. Discussion. Welcome. Stern.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
O'Vanore. Aye. Motion carried. Through the bills. So you gotta move the pile.
So, so I saw a bill there, the video of the storm stream. Is, is that a bill from a while ago or, or, so they came through and they, and they got it?
What do they, what do they?
Target did it. There is some that is destroyed and saying, so always the water gets caught there. It just keeps kind of building up until it just freezes up. They were gonna try and get ahold of H A Thompson, but at least they're not gonna try and line that twenty, twenty-five feet of that.
Isn't that about how much it's fallen in it, but?
No, it's not that much, was to get into there.
Okay. That'd be good.
Yeah, Carmen actually didn't tell us.
Ryan. Motion by Wolf. Second, second by Stern. Discussion. Welcome. Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
O'Vanore. Aye. Motion carried.